Good afternoon. Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda on the bill on declaring an educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. Today, we invited members of the Pittsburgh Public School, its superintendent, his staff, and and the chairman or president of their board and the president of the PFT. Unfortunately, rather suddenly, the superintendent and the board cannot participate. Due to unavoidable delay, we will reschedule with them. However, we do have with us the president of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers and members of council. And we want to have this important conversation about the educational achievement of our children. As everyone knows that we, Councilman Lovell and I, have introduced legislation declaring a state of educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. Before COVID, there was an existing racial achievement gap in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. And so, um, um, we know that. We know that there's a gap between African American children and children as a whole. However, we also know that COVID, we believe, has exasperated existing problems. Remote learning has been especially hard on black students. Disproportionately, black students have had, have black students' parents or essential workers who are unable to provide educational support at home. Black people have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic health-wise. And black students have had a particularly difficult time adjusting to online learning. And there's been a number of students who just didn't, you know, log in. All those schools back in session. And so what we really want to do is sort of talk about what we think the current crisis is. And then how we can partner together, all partner together, to make our schools and our communities more impactful for our students. And so I think I want to turn it over first to Nina for you to kind of give your opening comments and I guess your, 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 your sort of take on where we are. Are we, is there an educational crisis? Or are we, you know, or are things, you know, well and fine? Kind of where are we, where are we with delay of the land?
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I'm very excited to be here to have this conversation. One of my favorite conversations talking about our students. Because I think we should have this conversation. We need to work together. I was very excited to watch the last post-agenda review because there were some terrific ideas about how we can work together. Because that's exactly what we need to do. Nobody can do this alone. We have some terrific educators in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. But unfortunately, we're with, and they're great, but we're only with the kids six to seven hours today. We, a day, we need to all work together and, and work together to get our kids ready. We want to make sure they're safe, healthy, and ready and able and open and excited about learning. So think of what we can all do if we work together to, for education. I, I think it's an excited, exciting prospect. And last time when I watched, I was so excited. I was even texting some of you, as you know, as you gave your ideas. Because I got very, very excited. I see Deb smiling because I was yelling at the computer when she talked about food insecurity and lead in the water and other things that we could do. Because I was getting excited because there's so much we can do. And the city and the school district and the PFT has worked together so well in the past. And we've done some wonderful things with playgrounds. We've done beautiful work together with playgrounds. I'm so proud of the work we've done on career and technical education. Some of my proudest times as president, when we've worked together. You've got to go over to Westinghouse and see what we have done together in the Emergency Response Technology Program. And I thank you again for, oh, you have to see the kids. They are so proud. Thank you to Mayor Paduto for donating a fire truck. You were done with it. But a fire truck and a police car. And to see the kids working on those in an ambulance. It is, what we have done together is, is just unbelievable when we work together. I know we've already met with the city, heard about your farm, possible farm up in Brookline. And boy, did I latch on to that. And we've met, possibly, we would be the possible, the first urban district to have an urban farming program, maybe. It's just in the, the planning stages, but we could be the first, working with Penn State. I mean, I get excited talking about this when we work together. So I want to keep working together. The things we can do together is unbelievable for our students. Because is there a crisis? Absolutely. But the first thing we need to do is admit it, talk about it, and work together to make things better. I do want to say, I mean, do I think all is lost? Absolutely not. Has it been an awful year? Absolutely. I'm so happy we're coming through it. Did I see amazing things of parents and teachers working together? Oh, wonderful things. I am so proud of what I, I saw. Parents stepped up to do amazing things. Teachers going to kids' houses to make sure they were connected, finding kids, getting hotspots, making sure kids had computers. I saw such bravery and work to make sure. But did I see awful things too of kids we couldn't find, kids we couldn't track down, packets? We, we've got a, we've got a lot of work to do. I see the summer boost program going right now. We know we have a lot of work to do and teachers are going to step up and do it. But we all need to do it together. So if it's okay, I just want to take a minute because people don't know. And, and we don't brag about it enough. And I get frustrated. Can I, if it's okay, I'm going to take a few minutes to share some of the things we do. Because I, I want you to know. One thing right now, I'm very proud. We received a $50,000 grant from the American Federation of Teachers. As we speak, a number of our teachers are door knocking right now to our parents with our community partners from Great Public Schools Pittsburgh. I just got off a call to get an update. They are out door knocking to parents, which I, I want this. And the district is planning to do this as a continuation to talk to parents about the great things going on in Pittsburgh Public Schools and tell them, to answer their questions. And I'll go, I've got to tell you, it's been the best thing we've done. The response is incredible and how happy the parents are to see the teachers. The kids are like ecstatic. And we hand out free books to the kids, but they're answering questions. And, and I think the parents are so thrilled to get their questions answered, to, to ask questions about career and technical education. How do I sign up for preschool? How, how about the school down the road? And I, I just love when they come back every day to hear. The kids are so thrilled to see a teacher and hear about the boost program. It has been such an, after this year, it's been such an uplift for me. To every, every day, I scoot up as soon as the teachers come back to hear about it and to work with our community partners from GPS. It is magnificent. And the kids are so thrilled to get the free books. It, it gives me such a lift every day. So I want you to know about that. And early childhood is something else we've worked with the city on. I love when we work with the city. And something else we're working with the city on. And I just want to remind you the great things we've done with the city. We were working too on a program for diversionary practices for our kids. So let's keep it up. Let's work, let's keep working together because we do amazing things. Something else we do, we, we, in the city is we're trying to get more diverse teaching, teachers. If the research shows, and I just want to read this. Whereas for students of color, having a teacher of the same race or ethnicity may very well help to increase test scores and reduce the likelihood of disability issues in addition to benefiting from seeing members of their own race and ethnicity as role models in position of authority. And we want you to know, we're worried about that. We're losing African American teachers in our schools. We're aware of that. And many people don't know that we're working with the school board. We want to increase our numbers of African American teachers. Because we know how important it is, not just to the African American teacher, students. It's important for our white students to see African American teachers also. I know how my own kids, when they would have a diverse teacher, they would get, come home so excited because they were so used to seeing white teachers all the time. They would be thrilled when they'd have an African American teacher and they'd come home so excited. We're working with the district. We have a teaching academy at Pershere. Wonderful. We are working with the district to bring more diverse teachers. We have, the PFT has an African American teacher mentorship program that we're very proud of. We mentor our African American teachers. So we build their confidence. We, we try to link African American teachers together. We have social events for them. We have a book club together. And we also work, we, we also have a sub up program where some of our paras, we work to have them because we have a substitute problem. We, and a lot of our paras are African American, where they can be substitute teachers. And we're very, very proud of this. You may not know about this. We are using PFT money, our Quest funds, and the district puts in money for para professionals to become teachers. Our first cohort is going through Point Park and Carlo. Am I right? Carlo, yes. And they are becoming teachers. They are going through, they've been working all year. And they, we help subsidize their education. The district has done a great job too. When they're student teaching, they will be still receiving healthcare and half their salary. And they will be becoming teachers and we're very, very excited about that. So we're working towards diversity. All of this, we think, will help our children academically also. So we want you to know about the good things we're doing also. We have that, we're diversity. I want you to know, we do a lot with our members to help them educationally. The Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers, out of the 3,600 locals of the, of the American Federation of Teachers has the longest-running educational ERD, the Educational Research and Dissemination Program. Longest-running is almost 40 years. We have been running that and it's sponsored by the American Federation of Teachers. And we're very, very proud of that. The past year, we added a cultural, relevant pedagogy class that we're very proud of and was very, on the Saturday and this year, very tough. We had only over 40 people sign up, give up the Saturday to sign up for this class because it was so important to them to take. And it was an excellent, excellent class. We have grassroots committees, over 12 of them, where people can get together, like all of our special ed teachers get together, para professionals get together, so they can talk in cohorts about how to get better. We invite administrators and to talk. So the PFT really is working to get our teachers and our para professionals better, to make things better for our students. Because we, we really do see that without our kids, we have no union. So we're always working, we're always working together in partnership because we want our, always, our eye is always on the prize of making things better. Do we need, we, do we think things are perfect? Not at all. I want you to know, we know there are issues. We want to get things better. We would love to partner with you. We, as I said, I was so thrilled last time. We need help with our community schools. We want them to grow. Love Deb's idea for the lead in the water. Love that your talk last time about safe zones. Loved our work together on place, playground, the food insecurity. Deb, please, let's work on that. And please, if there are any way you could help us on the transportation. We do want to open up. Our teachers are terrified about, we want to be five days a week. Everyone is determined. On the door knocking, parents, number one concern. Are you going to be open five days a week in the fall? That is their number one concern we're getting while we're door knocking. Teachers, that's their number one concern. Everyone knows a hybrid model is not the best for kids. We want, but that, as we still know, we are, I think, 300, is it 300? Bus drivers, short. We, if you can think of any way to help us get those bus drivers, that would be the number one help you can give us. We want our kids in their seats in the fall. We want every kid back that we can get. That would be the best help you could give us. And you know what? I think that's enough for now. But I'm really proud of the work we're doing and we continue to do. But I welcome your partnership and work together for the good of our kids and our school district. Because we know if we have a strong school district, we're going to have an even stronger city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nina. I, I forgot to mention earlier, let me introduce the members of council who are here. We have Councilman Daniel Lovell, Council President Theresa Cal Smith, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Councilman Bobby Wilson. And I think that's all that I see. And so we are having this sort of open conversation. I'm going to start, Councilman Lovell, you with us? I'm going to start with you since we are co-hosting this. I'll start with you and then I'll go down at least the line as I see it.
Thank you and thank you, Nina, for being here with us today. Earlier in your remarks, you said something that was interesting to me. Where you said, we sort of have to openly acknowledge that there is actually a problem. And when you and I spoke previously, and I did sort of take a step back and apologized because the intent was never to attack our teachers, not even to attack the district, but rather openly acknowledge that there was actually a problem. And just for everyone's benefit, for me, this really came about. I have children in Pittsburgh Public Schools, two of them. And I was watching during COVID, sort of the lack of learning and just be getting concerned about how are we ever really going to catch children up? And I would talk to my principal and I would talk to others about it. And then it, on one of my conversations, someone mentioned the Pennsylvania State Human Relations Commission's report. And asked, had I read the report? And I said, no, I didn't know the report even existed. So I read the report. And after I read it, I was terrified of what the report said was happening with many of our children in the school system. Reverend Burgess and I had a conversation. He read it, I believe he was equally terrified. But what, what we both, well, I'll speak for myself. What I, after reading the report, what I came to recognize is, one, this is a decades-old problem, right? So this isn't just under the new administration that's currently in place. This isn't just under your leadership. This is a decades-old problem that exists. And in order to solve it, in my opinion, it's going to take a collective communal response, right? It's going to take all of us marshalling resources to wrap services around our children, support our schools. Because even, you know, per our post-agenda last week, we know some of the issues are, happens before children get to school. Some of the issues happen after children leave the school, right? There's, there's gaps in learning during the summer. So these are, there's all these sort of issues. But in order for me, as a sort of an elected official, as a governmental official, to be able to marshal resources, we first had to openly acknowledge there was a problem and begin discussing that problem so that we can then figure out how do we go get the resources. So that's what this, for me, Nina, was always about. It was never an attack, but it was, we do have a serious problem on our hands. And so I just wanted to sort of put on the table how we got to where we are. With that being said, I noted a couple of things you have. But, but before I go to the specifics that you spoke about, in your, sort of, in your opinion, why is this a decades-old problem? The learning, the learning gap between white and black children within Pittsburgh Public Schools? Do you have any sense of why this is a persistent problem that exists?
Well, unfortunately, it's not just a Pittsburgh problem. It occurs across our country. And I, I liked, I, if you look, I mean, and I did mention community schools. Some places are addressing it. And I, and I did mention, and you mentioned it too. It can't just be the school. It has to be a community-wide. Because the schools, we have them and we love them for those seven hours a day. We have to all work together. And that's why community schools are becoming so popular in places like Cincinnati, where they're really putting everything they can into community schools. You're seeing the gap is closing. And I think that's why we really have to put more into our community school program, follow places like Cincinnati and really put the push behind it and see, like, they've closed their achievement gap, opportunity gap, opportunity gap to like 3% because they have put so much behind their community schools. And I think we need to do that. They're doing it right. We're, we're doing it, we're doing it too. We need to really beef up our community schools. We have nine, we should have 55.
So, so educate me if you, if you'd be willing. What are, when, what are they doing with their community school model that we're not doing?
They, they have a really robust community school model where it's in every school. They don't have not, they have it in every, they're about our size. And we went to look at it when we were starting our community school. But they, they put their money where their mouth is. They have it in every school. They have clinics in the schools. They wrap their arms around it. Families know that's, their schools are the center of their neighborhoods. They go there for dental care. They, like I was saying, kids go to school, teachers can teach because they're not the, they're not trying to feed the children. And like Deb talked about food insecurity, whatever. They can teach because they know they can go to school and their, their teeth aren't hurting. I mean, I remember as a speech therapist and my kids at Stevens had holes in their teeth. And no wonder they couldn't, they couldn't concentrate. They were in pain. But at, and Cincinnati, they have a dental clinic right in the school, in some schools. They have a doctor in the school. It's like parents can go there for legal aid. They, things are taken care of so a teacher can teach. They're, they're not dealing with all the things that some of our teachers are, are dealing with. We need to take that away, like you talked about, dealing with all the other things so a teacher can teach and isn't getting the kid crackers because they didn't have breakfast. Teachers need to be able to teach.
In, in your opinion, what is holding the district back from being able to really ramp up the community schools model?
Money. Money. We, we need to be able to afford, in Cincinnati, some of their, their coordinators in every school, there's a community school coordinator. Oh, what do you, pays for, Bob Nelken, United Way. United Way pays for that, some of their community school coordinators. I don't know if that's the right way or the wrong way, but every, everybody chips in. And they pay for this. Every school has a community school coordinator. That's the person, like Langley, they, you need glasses. They get the kid glasses. They have a truck that pulls up in front of Langley. I think it's our strongest community school. They pull up, every kid gets a pair of glasses if they need glasses. You need braces, they have a dental thing comes up and paid. The community school coordinator makes sure if a kid needs a mental, medical issue, it's taken care of. So when little Billy comes to school, he's ready for school. He's not worried about, I can't see the board. We know little Billy can see the board and the teacher doesn't have to scramble finding glasses for him. It's taken care of. Teacher can teach.
Okay. Is there any conversation that you're aware of that where the district is potentially looking at using some of the federal relief dollars to beef up the community school model?
You know what? That, and, and maybe this, the, the district is, and I, once again, I don't want to speak for the district, but I know they're very interested in having input from parents, the union, from everybody. So I know that's what they're doing with the federal relief dollars. But once again, I don't want to speak for them, but I know they want to get input from everyone. So I'm hoping people will give that input.
Thank you. One of the concerns I had was when you, when you read the report, many of our children are already years behind where they should be. And given COVID, that just exasperated the problem. In my opinion, and I'm not saying this is right, I'm, I'm asking, I'm, I'm curious of your thought. My thinking was that we needed to create some version of a year-round school model if we were ever going to be, begin catching up those children. And maybe it's done in quarters and maybe you take off all the month of December and maybe all the month of August. But that we really needed to transition to a year-round model if we're ever going to catch our children up. What is, does the PFT have a position on sort of year-round schooling? Or what are your thoughts in general?
Oh, yes, we've talked about that. And you talked about that at the last, I, I was talking to my computer a lot during that last meeting. We've absolutely talked about that and having a pilot, I think that would be a fascinating model. In fact, we've met with AFT and presented to the district a whole folder on innovative ways to deal with some schools. And that is a, a model that we'd be interested in and a pilot and try it, just like you said. Like, and I think that would be a fascinating way to try it. Like maybe be off in the winter, or what, I think some people would love that because they don't want to go outside in the winter. But especially now that we're all one-on-one computers. But I think that would be a really interesting model that we could try as a pilot. I'm more than willing to talk about. Once again, I love partnerships and innovation. Absolutely. I would love to try that.
So when I brought the idea up to my children's principal, she was also supportive of the idea, but also spoke about that that would be a way, using that as a model, there could be a way to partner with the city. So as you're well aware, many of our schools do not have air conditioning. And so would there be a scenario whereby the children are in the school for the first, maybe two-thirds of the day? But at its peak, they then partner with the city to be able to access our pools. So all our children are learning to swim or being able to access our rec centers so that they're outside in the parks. That's just one example. But I say that to say, with whomever is in the room, sort of talking through this model idea, to the extent that someone from the city could be there and talking it through with you all, I think that would make a whole lot of sense as one way in which we could potentially partner for the betterment of all, of all our children.
That's a terrific idea because air conditioning is such a problem. Because I don't know if you've ever been in one of our schools in June or July, what, it gets very hot. And only about 12 of our schools, maybe it's 13 now, are air conditioning. And that's, I'm glad you brought that up. That is a very concerning issue. Because some of the schools, you could literally pass out and it's so difficult. So I think that's a great idea. I'm going to write that down. Sorry, I had to plug in.
Oh, no worries at all. You mentioned, in your opening remarks, you mentioned something along the lines of parents being substitute teachers?
No, paras, I'm sorry, para professionals.
Oh, okay.
Bring more diversity to our workforce. We're very serious about that, yes.
Okay.
But they have to have a degree to do that, yes.
Understood. You also spoke about the diversity and trying to get a more diverse workforce. Talk a little bit more about what that looks like.
Oh, of course. Um, you know what? And we have been doing research on that at our state convention. That was one of our resolutions that was brought forward by the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers. I'm proud of that. Pennsylvania has one of the lowest, which is embarrassing, lowest diversity rates across the country. And we're worried about it because the numbers are going south. They're, they're getting smaller, even though we have a high number of teacher colleges. Well, they're decreasing also the number of kids coming out of colleges and teacher prep. So we are facing a teacher shortage. But the number of students of color coming out are going down too. Now, part of this, someone reminded me at our convention, is a positive because so many students of color are being snatched into high-paying jobs. And I guess, and I'm happy for them, but we want them teaching. So there is an issue. We are, we are, the numbers of teachers of color are going down. And that's an issue. I think that's bad. And we want our students, that particular, our students of color, but it's good for all students to see teachers of color. And then the numbers are going down, particularly in Pennsylvania. So we are working, we're working with the district to bring in more teachers of color into our district. We are working on many of our paras. I think 55% are African American. So we have the parrot-to-teacher program now, where we're working with our paras to become teachers. And if they have a degree, we urge them to go into a teacher preparation program. Right now, I think we have over 20 in our first cohort, 25 in our first cohort. And it's at Point Park and at Carlo to become teachers. They're not guaranteed a job, but they're guaranteed, because of course, quality is number one. But we, that, but they are guaranteed to be interviewed. And they are supported, they get great support, really good deals. And we pay the, the PFT And we pay, uh, the, the PFT and the board, uh, pay for their education. And we hope this will bring more teachers of color into our workforce and we're very, they're doing great. We just had a meeting with Carlo and they raved about the quality of our paras and it made me really proud, we haven't met with Point Park yet. But they raved about the quality, special ed, we have some secondary teachers. And they're doing really very well and we're very, very proud, they're working hard, they're working really hard, but they're doing a great job.
Okay, um, two other questions and I'll let my other colleagues speak. I do know, you mentioned transportation being three hundred drivers short. I, I think it may be worthwhile, we have a colleague on county council who does, uh, Dwyer Walton. Who does a lot of various sort of training programs, um, we may be able to have a conversation with him. About getting enough, getting bus drivers or currently underemployed individuals trained so that we can have the amount of drivers. Ready, um, for the fall, for when the kids go back to school, so I will be sure to follow up with that conversation. My last question before I turn it off to colleagues is specifically for. Our African-American children that are far, that are not reading at grade level, that are not performing math at grade level. What additional resources do you believe they need and or we should be bringing to the table to assist them? To get them up to where they need to be, because apparently, and, and just being in the classroom. From seven to three or whatever the time is, isn't really getting there, they need additional supplemental help. Like my son, as an example, I don't believe he's reading at the level that he should really be reading at just yet. And so this summer, we made a conscious decision to try to get him additional reading support, um, so that he enters third grade as a stronger reader. So I'm just curious, what other resources can we be partnering with or can we help bring to the table to provide? Supplemental support that so many of our students obviously need?
Well, I, I hope, uh, the boost program, I think is great that we have that available. Quality after-school programs, I'm a very big supporter of those. I've always been a big supporter too and of course, uh, the, the, I don't run the district, but I've always been a big supporter. I'm also reading, I'm a speech therapist, but I'm also a, a reading specialist. I've also been, been a great supporter of reading specialists in our school. I've seen the great things, I, I never practiced as a reading specialist, but I've seen the wonderful things they've been able to do. Even with my own sons, I have three sons and the great supports they're, they're able to, um, provide. Uh, I did my training at Pitt and I worked with Isabel Beck and unbelievable and we offer a class here on it. So I, I do wish we had more reading specialists available in the schools, I think they're great. After-school programs to do that kind of work, I think. It was wonderful and some, and a number of our schools offer that also, I think would be really very helpful for the kids. To make reading fun and accessible to the kids and of course, uh, the work that a lot of our libraries do. And our, our libraries, which, which is excellent. So I, I think it's very important to make reading fun and accessible to our kids and make sure they're doing it at every opportunity. It's part of the reason we're handing out the books and it's wonderful to see the kids, oh, I didn't mention that. PFT has given away almost a hundred thousand books over the past six years. And, uh, we want kids to see reading as fun, it's important that they see reading fun, I don't care if they're reading a comic book. As long as they are reading, they, they should, uh, reading words as often as they can, I think it's very, very important.
Thank you, actually, one last question, um, because you mentioned that your teachers are out door knocking and that the number one concern is. Will children be back in school five days a week? Is there any concern that children won't be back in the school five days a week?
Uh, no, I will, bus drivers, that's, that's what worries teachers, they, they're so worried about the bus drivers, which I think is great, they want the kids back. Nobody loved the hybrid model, you know, uh, that nobody loved it. Because they, they want their kids there, you know, you want your kids in front of you, you know, that's best for the kids. It's just, the only thing worrying them is the bus drivers, we all want enough bus drivers to get our kids to school. So we make, we make sure that's the only concern, that's the only concern that I have and I know teachers have.
Okay, that's it for me, Rev.
Thank you, um, I'm just going down the line, I see them, the next person I see is Erica. Councilmember, it's Ross Burger.
Hi Erica.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Nina for being here and answering our questions today. Um, I'm glad that we have, we're able to have a robust conversation with you. I know it wasn't intended, but it's, 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 uh, really helpful to hear just one perspective today, so I appreciate it. I, um, I just picked up on a couple of things that we've talked about already and. You know, there's so much I have to learn, I admit that fully and I'm glad that we're having these sessions because, for that reason. You know, in part, but when I heard about your efforts to diversify teacher. Our, our teachers here, not just in this, in the district, but ideally across the state, but, and also in the region. I'm wondering what role local universities and our robust education programs have to play. Where they fit into the mix currently, what opportunities you think, um, we have to leverage there? Um, I mean, such a great community leader. With, uh, Dr. Kinlock at the University of Pittsburgh, I mean, where, how do universities and their programs play a role here? In both supporting teachers entering the workforce at PPS or in the district. Um, providing additional support and above and beyond the support that. More organized PFT offers, helping to diversify, like what it, what's the current status and what are the opportunities there?
You know what, that's, I'm so glad you brought that up, Dr. Kinlock has started a committee, which, on which I serve. About the same topic with Greg Bear from the Grable, uh, corporation. And before her, it was, and I adored him and I'm blanking on his name. Uh, the person who ran the program at Pitt before her and I, oh, I loved him, I hated to see him go back. Doctor, oh, he was so good. Uh, ran the program too, where they run committees about the same topic. We have a committee and there are, are people from charter schools. Uh, across the state, there's a committee about this issue, I mean, it, it is an issue across the country, it's not just us. Uh, the American Federation of Teachers has put out publications, I mean, everyone knows this is an issue and trying to bring. Uh, diversity, so, uh, she is already on it, she is working on it, they, they offer the support. And that is part of the issue, everyone is trying to bring. Everyone is trying to get, uh, more diversity into their workforce, into the teaching workforce. Philadelphia has, at the most diversity is in Philadelphia, they have many more African-American teachers than we do. And Pittsburgh, we're, we're the two most, so, uh, other districts are having a real issue. We, we have the most in the state. Other ones, very few, very, very few.
So where are teachers coming from, what programs are they coming from generally?
Oh, that's an excellent point, you know, uh, and it, we used to, the district used to be very good about sharing that data. You know, during our Gates years, we used to, every year we knew. But at that time, Pitt was a, a lot, we got a lot from Pitt, mostly from around our area. You know, Pitt in IUP, Point Park is where we get most of ours from around here.
So it really is about creating the pipelines, diverse pipelines through our local programs. Which doesn't surprise me, I just wanted to ask, so I was making assumptions.
But you know what, and at our teaching academy, oh, and I didn't tell you this, this is really cool. We have signed an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with, I've signed with Dr. Hamlet. Kids at our teaching academy, at our teaching academy, and if you get a chance, you have to go see it, it's for sure, Hannah McCarthy runs it. They, there are over a hundred, uh, students in it, we're trying to start another one at, uh, Alder Dice. And, uh, she has many, many African-American males, females, I mean, it, it is terrific, football players, uh, uh, they're wonderful. We have signed an MOU for the kids, if they go to college and they maintain a certain. Uh, grade point average, they are guaranteed a position back here in Pittsburgh, which is really wonderful. So I forgot to mention that, I'm very proud of that also.
Great to hear about. Moving on to an issue that isn't directly, well, I guess I don't know enough to know whether it's directly related. Or just indirectly related maybe to the achievement or opportunity gap. It's an issue I've heard about peripherally, both at the district and elsewhere. And it's, I know it's a big debate and just a logistical nightmare to think about, but the later start times. And matching start times with work times for parents. And then what I'm thinking about here is not only supporting students, their mental health, which I know is suffering now. Post-lockdown, um, behavioral health, but also, you know. Their ability to excel in school is, I know severely, I mean, just any student, regardless of who they are. Especially as they get into middle school and high school, their, their clocks are run differently, they. They need to, they need to stay up later and sleep in more and they're just not getting sleep and so. And that's affecting their, you know, every aspect of their lives. I know it's very, very challenging and I know that, uh. You know, there are, there would be ramifications for many different people, teachers, coaches, after-school programs. Um, but what it would do is give some additional support, parents who might struggle to. Care for their children after school or to the. General thoughts about that, opinions about that and whether. Whether the city can play a role.
That is a very difficult one, that is not something the PFT has weighed in on. Get it from both sides about, uh, students with jobs. And they need their jobs, we get from sports, I, I have a mom, three sons who all played sports. They still do in college, two of them, and what, what time will they get home? So that one is, but I understand the biological clock too, because our, our, I was in an elementary school and those kids are up, I think. Six, they have no, so that one is a very, I see both sides on that. So, so that's very, that's a very difficult one, that's very difficult, but the, the high school, I don't know if the kid, the kids at work, I worry about them. So that one is a very difficult one. And, and I, I would go with the parents on that, since mine are older now and in college, so I, 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 that one's a very hard one. I, I know the district wrestles with that all the time and there never seems to be a movement. I, you know, teachers battle it and they debate it and then it's never changed, so.
I, I can save for the district when we meet with them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, because teachers debate it all the time and things never seem to change.
Yeah, and once, in one city, yeah, there's a few cities now, they've tried out to get to the students with jobs issue. Offering some night classes for some students, so kind of a. A hybrid model where some students, majority of students probably are, are attending school during the day. Those who do better, for whatever reason, work during the day, they school after school. Their, 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 their schools start three. I don't know, interesting models out there.
Yes, and our schools used to go, when we were bigger, they used to move in shifts and I think that was even before my time. I, I know Alder Dice used to come in and shift, but I know if you change one, you're going to have to change all of them. Or you're going to, how will they play sports, which is a big thing to a lot of our kids, I get it, scholarships, that's hard. So I, I will leave that one to people that know more than I would about that one.
Thank you. My last question is really. So speaking of admitting that there is a problem. I think the other problem we have to acknowledge is that there are so many entities that are concerned about and are talking about. For City Council as a renewed sort of entity that is talking about this public. We all talk about this privately all the time. That, that just many of whom are working with one another in one-off conversations or in sort of. Very narrow bridges that have been built between us, but not, uh, wide bridges that have been built between institutions and entities. If you were to say that there is, you know, a first step that we need to take to get all these different spirit groups to. Rebuild trust and to begin talking to one another, listening to one another and then eventually working together again in a cohesive way. What do you think, what do you think the first step is?
You know what, first of all, and I, I think I, I wanted to start that with my conversation, I think we have to find out. I mean, there's a lot of good going on too, I know I get frustrated, it drives our teachers crazy. When only the bad seems to get out, there are so many good things, I know, I, and I, I own it. There are some bad things going on, but there are some absolutely incredibly good things going on. We have some fabulous schools, we have some schools with issues, but first of all, I would love it. And I think our teachers, I mean, we, we're scarred and I think we see that with some people. We, we're scarred because people beat us up a lot and I know our teachers are scarred. When, when people will say to you, oh, you teach in the city, oh, we are very proud. I, I wanted to come and teach in the city, but we, we're proud of teaching the city. I mean, maybe I can't speak for everybody, but I, I'm very proud of where I work. And I think we have to acknowledge there's a lot of good things, I think that would be really good if people would acknowledge. And that's why I wanted to start with some of the great things we're doing, because we're, I, I, to be honest, when I go down to the American Federation of Teachers. And I forget the great things, I'm like applauded, it's like, PFT is like a big deal. And I forget it until I go down to Washington and people make a big deal about us. Here, it doesn't, nobody seems to make a big deal about us, no offense. Uh, we're doing some really good work and I think our teachers are too. I, I would like us to applaud some of the good things that are happening in the city, wow. Dilworth, go to, go spend a day at Dilworth and you will, you can't leave there not, not happy. Beachwood, um, go, go to the CTE programs at Westinghouse, I mean, I can name great things at every one of our schools, we do have some issues. But let, first, let's start celebrating, I mean, and no, our, our, uh, realtors. Should quit bad-mouthing our schools and we know they do it and that's hurtful. We have to start celebrating the good things that we're doing, we have some bad stuff too. But first of all, let's start celebrating, I mean, I'm always talking about the good things city council's doing and I want you to know that. I love working with all of you, I think that would be first to start liking each other and celebrating each other. And I think we should do that and start having conversations, as you see, I like it. I like having conversations and working with each other and getting past the fear. Uh, maybe because I don't have fear, because I know you all can't hurt me, maybe that's it, I don't know, maybe you can and I don't know it. But, um, I, I think we should start sitting down and have, come over to the PFT and maybe we could sit down and, and talk more. I, I enjoy talking and, and talk about the ways we can help. I mean, as I said, I got excited with Deb's ideas, I thought they were fabulous. And maybe if we start seeing what we can do, when I saw what, what the city did for us at Westinghouse, wow, and the playgrounds and. I, I think if we take maybe baby steps and see what, uh, you've done wonderful things and I appreciate everything you've done for our students. And I, and maybe if we get past that and have the conversations and, and when I hear the things you do. Uh, I, I appreciate every single one of them and, and may, and I, but I tend to be a positive person. We need to start looking at the positives we can do for each other and appreciate them and appreciate the good things that are going on in the school. Not ignoring, I'm not ignoring the bad things, but appreciate that we all have to work in this together. Because there are kids and we all have, that, we all, not, not own them, we all are responsible for them.
Well, in the spirit of listening, that is very positive, that's just very helpful feedback, so I will take that and I will. Um, I'll run with it because I think that's, that's a good place to start, celebrating good. And to celebrate the good, you have to know more about what's happening, so. You know, again, I know that City Council individually, council members. you know, again, I know that city council individually, council members are in touch with principals and teachers and school board members and you, but I think that there is, there's a real opportunity to actually break out of our silos and build those wide bridges.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, that's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Deborah Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello Nina, it's wonderful to see you. Thank you for being here. Um, and thank you to all of our teachers in the Pittsburgh Public Schools who have been working under this very, very trying time and sticking with it and sticking with our kids. We appreciate you and we really appreciate your work. I'm working at home, sorry, for my two dogs who make me noise in the background. So I, I guess I, I, I took in a lot of notes today. So thank you to my colleagues highlighting some, so many of the issues around kind of what the dynamics and challenges for our kids. And thank you for your answers and for your questions as well. I've written down and put stars next to this issue about being 300 bus drivers short. It's definitely, I'll just take a minute to say, one of the issues that has come into play in some of my neighborhoods I represent, I'm remembering a moment in Polish Hill when Bigelow Boulevard was under construction, you know, Bigelow Boulevard is kind of this like wall that bounds the neighborhood and it was closed. And so cars were trying to get to downtown through Polish Hill. And it was a problem for one of the bus stops at Melwood and Heron. And there was aggressive driving. And so we had the police officers come out to traffic calm and make sure kids could cross safely to their school bus stop. And the, the officers, thank you, they know that they were very proud of themselves. They were very happy to, to be helpful. And, but I still got complaints from residents that there were no police officers there. But the police officers reported being there. And then when we got from PPS, the school bus schedule, what the officers didn't realize was that this picking up and the dropping off, picking up in the morning lasted for three hours. There's over 16 different schools picking up on that corner. Yeah. So there's, that's just like, I think, an interesting snapshot of how complex the school bus routing is to get all of our kids where they're supposed to go. So maybe this is like a really unexpected to me, but way that there's an opportunity to build back better for the kids and for routing and for maybe even for the district to simplify perhaps. Um, I, you know, and maybe there's a way to do the routing and service, I'm not, I'm no traffic engineer, right? In a way that is more efficient possibly, right? Maybe fewer vehicle miles traveled or something like that. Cause obviously just that snapshot to me just gives me this picture of like, there just must be buses just going everywhere for hours. Um, and so it's like, it's a big route for, for my mind, I think. Is there a routing solution that maybe helps? So.
Well, you know what I think?
Get that out.
That. So that is choice, parents' choice.
Yeah.
Lead. Special ed is a big part. And once again, I don't want to speak for the district, but I think a lot of it and parochial and private schools. So a lot of that is a district to their credit, having to route kids all over the place.
All over the place. Right. And so, and it, it must change every year, right? So um, that's maybe an opportunity to work more on for another, for another time. But you know, the school year will be coming up quickly. So I, I want to touch base on those topics that you were referring to. I think last time I said, things that council works on that I hear impact kids' performance, right? Are things like housing insecurity, food insecurity. Um, we know that council members and I've got files going back to 2017 myself about how the city could be more effective mediating lead paint in, in private homes and in buildings everywhere. And also childcare, right? Because we know that a lot of our parents struggle with finding that kind of ages zero to three childcare, even if, even if their kids end up going to pre-K at age three, which not all city kids do that, but even for those, you know, there's still a gap in the early childhood from zero to three. And that we have been putting aside money as council for a few years and the administration just launched a variety of programs with trying together, I think, making announcement last week from grants till enrolling loan funds to, from a variety of different sources. Money again, that started off the city council, there was $2 million set aside, I think in 2017. But even before that, we had set aside $250,000. I want to remember that it was in 2015, which I moved over to the URA and the URA has found matching money. So those are, you know, it's a start. The money is, I don't think a single dollar has actually been dispersed, but that money is starting to be available now. Um, and so we'll want to help spread the word to try to increase the quantity and quality of childcare. Because it just is one of these things that adds a complication to a family. If you're trying to get kids to and fro different places or there's, there's early childhood is unavailable. Um, it creates a burden on that household. Housing insecurity, again, these are big issues. And we know from data and I talked about it extensively a number of months ago here in the pandemic and it's, it's still not solved and it's still an impending crisis that is building. We have more and more households in the city having been served with eviction papers and there's just more every week. Um, and some are being forestalled by the national moratorium. And we're worried that when that ends, there's going to be, as people are saying, like a kind of tsunami of evictions. And that does certainly does not serve our kids and let alone all the other vulnerable households in the city. That, those are big problems and we're, you know, if, if we, if there's anything that your teachers can also do, right? If they know of, of services that a kid's family needs around those issues, you know, I'm not sure. This seems to be the gap that the communities and schools is trying to bridge or just, or eliminate more than bridge, right? By bringing the legal services kind of into the schools. So that, that kid's family and household doesn't have to fall through the craps or cracks or go off looking for those services. Um, and I really like that idea. So even if we can to, you know, increase the availability of the community in school services or increase the services at the sites that are here. I think, you know, we at council, I speak for myself, have energy for trying to figure out how we kind of bring those services together to eliminate those gaps. Similarly with food insecurity. I, I've been in touch with the Food Policy Council. Many, I think all council members have been in touch and work with the, the groups working on hunger in the city. And are very aware of and have themselves created food distribution networks. And Councilwoman Smith has, and her team have done a great job in her district creating new distribution sites because there weren't any grassroots ones or local enough ones there. But again, if we can, you know, strive to meet those needs for our kids in the school system, that doesn't reach everyone in the city, but maybe we can prioritize or at least try to, to combine networks to make sure that households are connected to, you know, the providers and the services that we are putting in place, that are already in place or new ones that we put in place. I can, I, I would be enthusiastic there. I said yesterday in a different post agenda, I really hope that we hire on four new inspectors in permits, licenses and inspections to start inspecting buildings for lead paint. They're number one source of lead poisoning among our kids. And we have not been proactive at all. We're only reactive. If a kid is tested positive, can the county comes in and does an inspection at that kid's home? And that's not good enough. We, as the grownups, should not wait for that kid to become positive, test positive for lead poisoning. We know that that lead paint is out there. Um, and we can do a heck of a lot better at finding it and remediating it. Um, and so I think part of our job at council is legislative, but part of it is budgetary. And we should budget for it. And similarly, I, the, I think we should budget for the food security issue. We, we, I talked about this yesterday during our Emergence American Rescue Plan Act post agenda. I don't see any funding for food insecurity in the $335 million proposal that's at the council table. Um, and I would like to see funding for food, food insecurity. Um, and, and trying to see that we don't have hungry households in the family. And family, in the city, the city has our own families. Excuse me, right? Let's not have them. So I, these are places where I think we can start. I also appreciate, I think I said last time that the school district has been talking to us about trying to see if there were ways that we could access Pittsburgh Public Schools pools. And unfortunately, the school system is having the exact same problem that we are having in resources and staffing this summer and opening facilities. And so we've, we've not managed. I think they were still going to be they haven't said absolute, you know, 100% no. We're waiting to them to see if maybe there's even one place where we could provide access to citizens. And then as I think, I, I want to applaud your efforts to increase diversity. Um, I think it's, it's amazing. It's an amazing program that you're working together with PPS. I think I heard to pay for teaching certifications for your paraprofessionals. Um, and that you've got a program for kids currently in a kind of like teaching academy for high schools kids. And then if they go to college and get certified, they are guaranteed a teaching job in the city of Pittsburgh. That's fantastic. That's fantastic. Thank you for, for that work. Um, I really look forward to seeing how that turns out. I'm just going to chime in and say, uh, all my kids are really non enthusiastic about the idea of year round school. And I, I, I tend to be sympathetic there. Um, yes, I, I, I make, we want to make sure that we don't have an achievement gap by race. It's un, it's unacceptable in the city. But I think I heard you say that the city that has a 100% community and schools program, was it, is it Cleveland?
Cincinnati.
Cincinnati. Cincinnati has closed their gap by race to 3%.
Yes.
It's phenomenal.
And it was as large as ours.
And, and how many years has they, have they been working on this? Do you know?
You know what I used to know. Wow. I, I mean, I, I, and I hate, I don't even want to say it because I don't want to give you the wrong number.
Sure, that's fine. But yeah, that, 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 that it's doable.
Yes.
So I know my kids would vote for community services in schools over year round school personally.
And they literally built their schools from the ground up. They, they raised each school and built a new one. Every, it's amazing what they have done there.
Wow, that's amazing.
So impressive.
And so I'll, I'll stop there. I said, again, I think I, I have the energy to, to work on all of these issues that I think we're working on them as city council, you know, because we know that these needs are distributed throughout the city. But with, there's an opportunity to kind of have, you know, a quick, better outcomes sooner by coordinating with the school district, working with kids and their families and their households. Let's do that. Let's do that. So thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Deb. I'm with you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Deb. Councilman Bobby Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. And hi, Nina, good to see you again. I appreciate everything you're doing for our teachers and.
Thank you. I've heard you've been helping at Perry. Thank you so much for your work there.
Yeah, no problem. Well, I can talk about that first. Really what I, what I found, the, the biggest connection that we have to the schools is how we control our streets. And I think Councilwoman Gross was mentioning this and this was, you know, drop off and pick up. And you know, really, the Allegheny Circle has been a big front and center issue. And so, um, you know, I believe that we just need to, you know, keep the school and the principal at the center of making these decisions. So been doing, um, been trying to really include the principal so that we can, um, you know, get to some resolution on. I, I think we've come to a pretty good design, um, you know, for, for the Allegheny ATA. So, but we'll keep working at it and I'm willing to go back to the table and find something better for, you know, for the drop off and pickup if we need to.
Another terrific school. I love ATA.
Yeah. And we also had some, some pickup and drop off issues with Mara before the pandemic happened. I showed up, you know, in the morning just to see how that goes. And if we, you know, once we get back to, you know, full time all the time, then we definitely have to improve something in that space as well. But that's really the nuts and bolts of how we can really get involved with the school district and, and our schools and really just make the neighborhood better in general. Um, I've been able to see that firsthand and, you know, happy to play a role in that. So I had some specific questions around services that, um, you know, students and essentially teachers are, are provided since, uh, you know, I think you've mentioned that this is, you know, six, seven hours that, you know, you have with them, teachers have with them at school, eight hours sometimes. And, you know, really there's so much more. You know, that's going on in the child's life and the teacher can't be, you know, the school system can't be responsible for every, you know, failure of our, of our, um, you know, of our nation in a lot of ways, you know, in terms of correcting the wage gap and, and all the different disparities that come along with that. So, you know, I, I want to talk specifically about services that the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the teachers have under the, under some, I'm trying to find the legislation, but I believe it's called McKinney Vento that all, um, all schools are, you know, should have a, a social worker dedicated to homelessness. And specifically, you know, we know that homeless, now we know that homelessness looks a lot different. You know, it's not always someone outside. So in terms of that, that topic of urban poverty, are you, I was, you know, just curious on what, you know, what support is there in each school?
Well, I know each of our schools have either a social worker or a counselor. So, which is, I mean, I wish everyone had both, but yeah, and, and they're terrific, but they're overworked too. We're, we're working on, yeah, we, we don't want them to do like lunch duties and stuff. We want them to be fully able to do this kind of work. So those are the kind of things we're working on. So they're fully available to their students. But there's never enough time, never enough time to do their work.
Do you see that there should be more support in that way?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Cause when I hear of the, the event of, can't remember the, the name you use, but Billy's glasses, you know, he's able to get glasses at the event. Yeah. I'm just curious if, if these services are able to provide, are able to, you know, fill that need before we get to that event.
Oh, to what event? I'm sorry.
Oh, you mentioned that there is an event where, where children can get, you know, their eyes checked and wear the other right eyewear. I was just curious if services, you know, you know, if teachers or schools are aware of services that are already, you know, in the school system that, you know, possibly could be provided before that event. So that it's not. Yeah.
Right. Oh yeah. We have a lot. We're very fortunate in Pittsburgh to have. Right. Oh, yeah, we have a lot. We're very fortunate in Pittsburgh to have so many providers and so many resources with all the hospitals we have. But yeah, that, there, it's an issue because there are, we have, we're very rich with resources, but everybody wants them. So getting them all is, is sometimes problematic, to be honest. And then you have the issues with Medicare, Medicaid, insurance. So yeah, that's sometimes an issue.
And, you know, hopefully i- in the future, when we have the community schools that we can really tie in some of the services of the city contracts with. Because we are contracting with AHN on a program that, you know, in this, in, in the budget that we're reopening with these new dollars, we're looking to fund them more in the future and to really tie that program with families, which is a program that has an outreach team that tries to address urban poverty and homelessness and substance use disorder. And I'm only bringing this up because you were starting to mention diversion. And I wonder if, 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 if there's a, you know, I don't, I don't know how much you can talk about it, but, you know, I'm curious on, you know, what that looks like, community schools, other services that can, you know, those wraparound support that can really support families. Because ultimately, you know, if the family is, is, you know, supported, then hopefully the child can, can succeed.
That's very true. All right, diversionary practices?
Yeah.
It's, that's to try to avoid the, to get our kids, the, out of the pipeline of the prison pipeline. So we work with Dan Gilman and the mayor's office. And now we're working with the Black Girls Alliance, Equity Alliance, and a, a program there. So we're working there. They have a pro, a wonderful program. We're, we're using the Philadelphia program, which I'm really, really impressed with and trying to bring it to Pittsburgh also. Where we would have a diversionary program. I mean, they have some great programs in their schools where they, the kids kind of serve as a, they have a justice class where the kids kind of meet out the, 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 I, I don't want to make it negative, but they meet out the punishment for when a, a child does something. I mean, just the whole program is just wonderful. So we are working together with groups like Kim Booth and to work on that, to get that into Pittsburgh. There are a number of people that are very interested in bringing it into Pittsburgh. So we can avoid our kids going into the justice program. And to, to get, are you familiar with diversionary programs?
Yes, actually on my, in, in Zone One.
Oh, so you know, you probably know more about it than I do. That's, yeah, because they have a pilot program there. And so we're very excited about that. We're very excited. Jeff, Jeff?
Well, I mean, there, there's several different models that are being used right now. And the one that I mentioned was the, there is a co-response going on with the, the AHM program that I mentioned. But yeah, we have the foundation, I hope, on the North Side as well.
Yes, yes, and Kathy Elliott, and we're working with Kathy Elliott, and we'd love to bring that into our school district. Uh, Dr. Hamlet is on that committee too, Erica Furby Jones. So we're hoping to bring that to fruition in our district. And we're very excited about that also. Move it citywide. So we're very excited about that. Chief Brown's there. So we're all working on that together, which is another partnership we're excited about.
Great. I wanted to talk about another issue about land use, which is specifically about the, the land bank. You know, I, since we have the three taxing bodies and, and the, the school district is, is part of that. You know, moving forward with trying to make the land bank productive as possible. And I'm, are you familiar with the land bank?
No.
Okay, so there's a, and this is going to require like, you know, I believe there's an agreement coming up where the school district is, will be negotiating. And then also, you know, there is legislation that Senator Fontana is putting forward to, to make sales happen faster on blighted abandoned properties. But to really make this, this work, we're gonna need a, you know, we're gonna need a, a partnership with the, with the, with the, the district. So that we can use the, the land bank, which I believe it would be a good tool, funded, funded fully. Which is a tool to, to solve the, the vacant abandoned property issue that we have in, in the city of Pittsburgh. I mean, if we are, I'm just continuing to think of the message that we are sending to our youth that walk past the vacant abandoned property in their neighborhood and how that mostly, most likely reflects the inequalities or, or the inequities that they face in their schools as well. And so, you know, that's something that has lagged for some time. But I've met with recent new hires at the land bank. And I feel confident that we can get something done here. And I just wanted to bring that to light. I know that that's more of a, might not be in the realm of teachers. But, you know, teachers represent students, you represent teachers, teachers represent the students, and this is in their neighborhoods, so.
Yes. But Corey O'Connor and I have talked about it. I didn't realize. And he talked about using the CTE, Career and Technical Education students to build. We have carpentry kids who build in their classrooms, build houses. And at the end of the year, they take them down, which I always thought was so awful. Why can't they use a blighted program, because he has used that term with me, to build something in the, in the blighted? Wouldn't that be great?
Well, you beat me to it, because I was, I was just stopped on the street about a month ago at an event. And they were off the, you know, off to send you the, the program in a different city. But they said, look at this program. It's, it's high school students that basically are fixing up houses. And, and, you know, it's a program to really revitalize neighborhoods in a way. I guess, you know, I, immediately my, you know, my question to this individual was, well, how, how similar is this to, like Habitat for Humanity, you know? But anyway, it's a similar program that you might see. You know, it, it has some similarities, but, but anyway, the end goal is to, yeah, really incorporate how we address these land recycling tools at the same time that we're gonna, you know, hopefully we can, we can have juniors and seniors participate in a, you know, carpentry class or, you know, maybe it's even landscaping. Who knows? But I think there's some real great opportunity.
I think they would love it. I would much rather have them do that than build a lovely house and then take it down at the end of the year and have someone use it. I love that, Bobby.
Well, to get, to get there, I believe that we really need to solve some of these sticking issues with, you know, really acquiring these properties in, in the correct way so that we can get, get in there and actually address these, these. You know, currently the only tool we have right now almost is to do something quickly that is, is conservatorship. Which, you know, could always be an option, you know, a tool to actually, you know, fix up some properties with students. But, you know, it would be good to partner with, with the, with the foundation, you know, the city. Uh, you know, the carpenters union, someone like that to really get something moving like this. But anyway, I, I think that there could be good things on the horizon if we really focus on this, this land use issue.
I think that's a great idea. And the carpenters union does have a partnership with the district. They just unveiled it. So I think that's a great idea. I love that idea. Wonderful.
Okay, well, that's all the, that's all the questions, comments I have right now. And I appreciate your time and your willingness to, to come to council and, and figure some of this stuff out.
Oh, wow. Great idea.
Thank you very much, President Teresa Gelsmann.
Well, I think I'm last intentionally here for my last episode. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Reverend Daniel, for having the meeting. And thank you, Nina, for being here. Just real briefly, I got a message from our IMP department that Cindy, Director Cindy Falls is trying to get on, but she cannot, she needs to update her Zoom version. So she's unable to talk or turn on the camera until she does. But I did just ask if maybe she can call in, Reverend, maybe call your phone or my phone, and we can put her on speaker. Or the, the clerk's, the clerk's office. And if she needs my number, it's four one two nine six nine four nine nine one. She can hear, but she can't speak.
Kale, can you hear me? This is Cindy. Yeah, well, yeah, with much difficulty. I'm in a major, major rainstorm. And, and I'm not, I, I can't even get out of my car. I'm at Costco. Yeah, I'm glad I could get on too. I've been trying and trying, but finally it worked. So what, what can I offer as part of this conversation?
I'm gonna let Reverend Burgess take that part over. And Reverend, I'll ask my question.
Hi, Reverend Burgess.
Hello, how are you doing, Ms. Falls?
I'm a little scared right now, but other than that, fine.
So Teresa, you can ask your questions and then I'll sort of say some things and finish up.
Well, did you want to, Director Falls to participate?
Yeah, if she can. I mean, if there's something she wants to say. We've been talking about all of the good things that the public school is doing and things we can partner together to kind of, to go after the achievement gap. That's been with the conversation, opportunity gap. That's been, I think, the sense of the conversation is, how do you, how do you view, probably the question would be, what are some ways you think the city could partner with the district to impact these kids?
Well, first I'd like to say thank you all for having this conversation because I'm, I'm not gonna say it's overdue because it's been done before. And it went nowhere, you know, it somehow died. The partnership between the city and the school district, that is a must. We are the, the district of Pittsburgh Public Schools in the city of Pittsburgh. This should not even be an option. We should be working so closely together trying to do and form all these opportunities for our children. So, you know, I, it kind of hurts me to think that this is what we've had to come to. When we should have been holding hands and working together a long time ago for our kids. Okay, that being said, thank you for bringing it up again. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I'm kind of sad because, you know, I only have a couple months left on the board. But with eight years that I've been here, I have to tell you, coming from a retired teacher, I've been the career and technical education person who's been the liaison between the board and CTE. And I could never be prouder of these programs. Because, as you all know, and it's probably been said, not all kids are gonna go to one, four-year college, two-year college, et cetera. Woo, the thunder and lightning is unbelievable. Anyway, with that being said, we need kids who have skills. We need kids who have good work ethics for academic as well as CTE. But here's what, here's the issue. For far too long, we have never made a marriage between the two of them. It has always been someone's either academic or someone's either CTE, Career and Technical Education. And you know what? I have fought and fought and fought. Because the CTE students must have those academic qualifications as well as the academics. But the academic children never have an opportunity to dip into CTE. And what happens then, they graduate going into nursing and doctors and pharmacy and a programs that we offer here in, in the district without having even the taste of it. So I try and try and try to get that schedule conflict stuff worked out. Because guess what? My kids who go out there have told me repeatedly, repeatedly, you know, Ms. Falls, we were actually bored our first year because we knew this. We knew this. And how proud is that? For, for students to go out and say, whatever field they were interested in, they knew that information. So we do have the opportunity to make these foundations for children. But guess what? We've got to get back to internships. We've got to get back to apprenticeships. We've got to get back to getting kids out of the classroom into the real world so that they can have these opportunities. And I swear to you, oh, I don't know, I'm gonna take a rough guess and say, at least forty to fifty percent of my kids that went through health careers are in health careers. And they are in areas where they interned and they really loved and they went out. So we have to open our doors. We have to knock. You know, when I, when it was time for me to do internships up at Carrick High School, I went and knocked on Brentwood's doors to the veterans, veterans, the veterinary place and said, excuse me, I have a couple students who are interested in working with animals. Would you be interested in having them here for an internship? And they said, oh my goodness, you want us to have city kids? And I went, uh huh, I do. I want you to have city kids. And that was a fifteen-year relationship. I was able to get kids in the suburbs, get the experiences they wanted. They rode with Baldwin EMS, fully dressed, fully dressed and rode with Baldwin EMS. And then, of course, they would let them do little things, but they would get to know the ambulances. You know, learn how to measure someone's pulse, maybe put on oxygen. But they were out there in the real world. We can't keep kids in a classroom sitting and not let them experience it. It, it doesn't work. So, you know, once again, we do have, you know, all the carpentries, the culinarys, the health careers. I mean, I could go on and on and on. There's sixteen and soon to be more programs. Angie Mike, the director, she, she texts me the, the other day, said, we are going to be the first district in this state that is having an apprenticeship program with, and I can't remember who she said. I don't know if it's the, one of the, one of the trades that we hadn't had before. The, the first district in, in this, in this state. So there are so many good things that happen. And I don't want to take up all this time, but I do want to brag, and I'm gonna brag. You know, I don't know how many of you know, I had breast cancer. And when I went, much afraid, to my hospital, my breast surgeon graduated from Bursheer High School. Bursheer High School, my surgeon, my medical oncologist went to Oderdyke. And here's the kicker. The person who did my radiation, the radiologist, was one of my former students. How great was that? And I'm bragging about that because those are the, some of the good things. But we need to work together. And at one point I came down to the mayor's office and we did have sort of this discussion. And I don't know, something happened and it never came to fruition. But I'm gonna tell you, I will work very hard with you my last couple, couple months and even beyond, after I take a break. After I learn what it's really like to retire, okay? I will work very hard to help get these businesses together and, and knock on doors, get kids opportunities and et cetera. Because that's, that's the real world. That is the real world. And we need to do it in jobs and places where it is now the demand. You know, it has changed since when I taught, Reverend Burgess. But I can tell you, the principle remains the same. We've got to get kids out there. I got so much hassle when other teachers would say to me, oh, you can't take kids out for a day. I'm like, well, yeah, I can. That's why they hired me. They hired me to use my skills as a registered nurse. They hired me to use my skills as a registered nurse to get kids cu- career ready. And that's what I gotta do, and that's what I did. So, you know, this is the kind of stuff that I would love to work with the city to continue to give kids opportunities. And I'm sorry if I rambled, but it's, I'm just so proud of the things that we do that are never shown. And, you know, my breast surgeon, I actually took pamphlets to her from the CTE program. And she said, oh, my goodness, Cindy, I would love to pass these out. When new people come to our city and say, you know, I'm a little confused about which school district should, should we be looking at? And she said, here, take his brochure and look at this. And you look at some of those programs, my goodness, my kids would be in them. My own kids would be in those programs. So it is a matter of us sitting down, you know, stop, stop the, you know what I want to say? And let's get down to business and let's figure out ways that we can work with kid, uh, get kids more opportunities. And have them stay, sir, and everyone in this city. I don't want these kids leaving. They need to be here. They need to be good citizens. They could be neighbors. They need to be, if they so choose the neighborhood they grew up in, so they can be proud. Did I ever do it?
You're fine. Thank you very much, President. Theresa goes with.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Falls.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Burgess. I just want to, uh, first say that, um, I heard the conversation about Cincinnati and improving their, the student achievement gap. But I, I thought I heard somebody say three percent, and if that's correct, and we're looking at Cincinnati, if I recall correctly, Dr. Thompson increased it, they found out after he left, but a year after, by two percent. So maybe we can, um, also talk to, uh, Dr. Thompson or, and see what he was doing in Pittsburgh that was working at the time, uh, a little, at least a little bit. But I really think that it just, neither of those numbers are enough to make me say that we ought to be modeling after Cincinnati or continue doing what Dr. Thompson was doing, although it's, it's better, it's not best.
It was only, it's a three percent gap. We have like a twenty-seven.
I thought you said, okay.
They improved it to three percent. I mean, I don't want it to have any gap, but twenty-seven percent to three percent is a heck of a lot.
Right, it's a different, right, okay.
Yeah.
And, and then, um, this is one of those days. But then I just want to also ask, Nina, um, you're also working without a contract. Is there any progress on the teacher's contract?
Unfortunately, um, to be honest, not at all. I'm, I'm, we're very frustrated by that, and the teachers are very frustrated by it.
So I know a lot of, um, teachers, um, who are laughed by racial, um, just with a lot of diversity. And the ones I know are frustrated as well, um, because I think you would talk about incentives, there's nothing better than having a contract, knowing that you're going to be working, knowing that you're not going to be walking a picket line, um, to make it for incentives. So to me, that's a, that's a great incentive and might want to start there.
I agree. After they worked so hard this year, and, and honestly, they were in status quo and they weren't allowed to move up a step. That was very frustrating for them.
And I think I have a unique perspective because I worked for the school district. I was a parent in the school district. I was a PTA president at several different schools. Um, I challenged the district in many ways and, uh, continued to work and started the education commission, which is not seated. Um, but did a lot of things, and now I actually have, as you know, family members, um, in the district and come from a family of teachers. Uh, so I think that, um, I have some unique perspective there. But I, I just, to me, when I hear all these conversations and all the talk about what we should be doing, how we ought to be doing, some of us have been doing a lot of it. And I would just say, I think to me, that one of the biggest concerns has always been, how do we engage the parents? How do we get them more engaged in this process of education? And especially when a lot of parents have a lot of challenges. And I hear, I heard Councilman Gross, uh, speak to some of that, and some of my colleagues spoke to some of the challenges and concerns. But to me, getting parents to feel comfortable coming into a school when they, a lot of parents didn't graduate, um, or have challenges on their own, I think is, is a big challenge. And I think that that's something that we really ought to be working on. And I've been talking to the administration about these resource centers across the city. And that might be one of the things that we, I think that would be beneficial. Because I remember a woman at Fort Pitt when I was working with her. She gave me a hard time through this, uh, meeting, through the whole meeting. And, and at the end of the meeting, I found out that she had not graduated. She had six kids. She was felt uncomfortable. But when she was done and we were done working together, we had a party at the Hill House for me. When the, when everybody came together and it was all over, she was working for Pittsburgh Public Schools. And so, I mean, that was a woman who was afraid to go in, and it just took somebody to take the time to help make her feel comfortable and, and, um, and entering that school. So I just, I, I, I think that we, we leave the parents out, and they're such a huge part of this equation that, um, if we want to see success, we have to work with them. And I actually think that we have to start with them because we can keep kids, you know, all year round, keep them early in the morning till late at night, which we are doing in many cases. And it's same, as I mentioned time and time again, a lot of times the poor kids go home to some of the same dysfunction they left in the morning or that they're afraid to go home to, so they don't even bother going home. And so if we're not doing something to work with the families and to work with the parents, um, I think we're not really helping kids at all. And so, so, you know, to me, I, I, we can talk about all the great things we're doing and pat ourselves on the back, but if we're not doing something with parents, we're not really doing much of anything.
President Smith, can I say something there? I wholeheartedly agree with you because I've mentored children and then given that, you know, the reading or the whatever to the parents and realizing that the parents, they can't read themselves. So literacy programs that absolutely positively, and it's no disrespect, and it's not an embarrassment, we should be offering literacy programs for our parents because we can't ask parents to help kids who they can't, they can't read themselves. So I know at one point, um, Pittsburgh Concord was doing that because they had a lot of, of, uh, immigrants, and they were doing it for that purpose. However, I do think this, this is district-wide. It isn't just, you know, just the, um, the people who are coming in from other countries. And, but how do you ask a parent to help your child, you know, here, I want you, I read this with your child, your child read this with me. I'm gonna give you this book for you to go home tonight and work with him. And, and this blank look comes over their faces because they can't read. So we can't, you know, that's, I, please, I agree with you. One more other thing I want to say that you guys had said while I was trying to get on. Carrick used to buy houses in the area, flip them and continue to work. They did the whole thing. They did electric, they did plumbing, they did everything. And it was the, and I'm gonna tell you something, these were a lot of kids that were kept off the street that made everybody's life safer. So, and they were proud of their work. So yes, we need to bring that issue back too.
And some of those schools did auto body. Do they still do that too?
Yes, for sure.
Yes, Bursheer High School.
I thought Bursheer still did it, but I wasn't sure if people could come off the street and take their vehicles.
Yes, yes. Oh, there's so many different things. But that house, that house flipping is an absolute positive because, guess what? That's the real world too. Turn your television on. How many stations are flipping houses? So, you know, if you get a kid interested in some aspect of that, you know, they can put their hands on and do it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Reverend Burgess will have with, uh, DeWitt Walton, because I know he's caused a couple of carpenters and others. So maybe that's one of the meetings he can have, follow up or something.
Yes.
And then I want to talk a little bit about, um, the budget. Uh, but I don't think that this is the, I think I really needed somebody from, um,
Yes.
Facilities to discuss some of the questions and things that I have around that and the building structures. So that's it for me, but I just want to thank you, Reverend, for having the meetings and, uh, looking forward to working together.
Absolutely.
Totally.
Thank you.
So, Nina, I want to thank you for the courage and the, and the respect that you've shown us to be here today. Um, I'm not going to say much, I think. I want to just lay down my marker. My goal, which I think should be all of our goals, is for every child to be able to read and write proficiently at grade level. That's the goal. I think that should be the goal. That every kid should be proficient at grade level. Every kid. That should be the goal. Now, if that's the goal, we have to be honest. Black kids are failing that goal. They are not proficient. Not only some of them, the vast majority of them are not proficient at any grade level. Now, I'm not saying the school's not doing great things. Well, if we continue to do all the great things we're doing for another twenty years, the truth is, black students will continue to not be proficient in grade level. So therefore, my opinion is, we have to do two things at the, at one time. We have to celebrate the good things the school district is doing and the successes that some kids are having. But at the same time, being completely honest, that unless we do something transformational, we as a city, not the district, we as a city are failing black and brown kids because they cannot read, they cannot do math at a proficient level. And so once we, if we can agree that that's the goal, the rest of this becomes easier, right? If we agree that proficiency, and that's, I got that from, you know, um, Roosevelt, actually, that that's really should be the goal, that every child should be proficient. And so, and this is not the, the, the school's problem. This is not only the school's issue, not only the parents' issue, not, it's all of us, the community. We as a city, every, every single institution should be working together to help get these kids proficient and up to grade level. And that should be the goal. And I think if we agree on that, then how to do that becomes how we talk, right? So we know it needs to be more interaction, more academic interaction. So whether that's longer school days or whether that's better after-school, out-of-time programs, if that's, you know, more summer dream programs. I think that's, in my opinion, that if we can, at least that's what I'd like to suggest as a goal, is to focus, especially for black and brown children, focus on proficiency. What can we do to make the, to help these children become proficient at grade level, at every grade level? And I think that's a, I think that's a good conversation to have. Does that make some sense?
Yes.
That's a nice one.
Absolutely makes sense, sir. And again, I'm gonna ask you to throw in there some kind of, um, uh, engagement with the parents.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, uh, Ms. Falls. I don't, I don't, and I mean, Nina, I've talked to this at length. And my background is I've run, you know, programs for, for, for children and for parents.
Sure.
And so, um, I agree, I don't want to go this a length, but for some reason, we have not made learning a cultural reality for all families and all communities in our city, right? And so for some, some children, when they leave the schools, there's no more academic engagement. And other places, they leave and there's three, four hours of academic engagement, right? And so we, we kind of know that the solution is to increase academic engagement in all households and for all children. And so that's, and so.
Can I just add, Reverend, that we've got to stop being afraid of the conversation? We've got to stop trust, not trusting one another and realize that we are here for the betterment of our kids and our city together. And we have a responsibility to come together. I just want to say that. I think this constant wondering what the next move is, the next, the motive behind things, I mean, the motive should be our city and our children.
Well, I think, Nina and I have talked, Nina and I have talked, and before talking, we pray at different opinions of each other. But after talking, I think we agree on ninety-nine percent of the things we talked about, I think, right?
I agree.
I mean, it's, it's, it's really not about, it's about, in my opinion, and that's why I've been really consistent, hopefully consistent. I really think, to the extent we focus on the educational achievement of students, not on, not on, um, anybody, not, not blame fault, but how can we increase the academic achievement of students? I think that's, in my mind, that narrow goal is something we should figure out how we can work on together. So I'm, with that, I'm gonna, that's my closing remarks. Thank you very much, Nina. Thank you all members of council for participating. And with that, unless there's nothing else from the president, I'm going to dis- dismiss this meeting and call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for participating. Be blessed, and I will talk to you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have to add in there, education can be fun. Something happens too, that we lose, that, that there's something wrong if we have fun when we're teaching our kids. Oh, my goodness, no. We need fun. We need humor. We need to be able to know each and every child and have a relationship with them. And that is the basis for, for good success.
Good point.
Be blessed.
I'm done. I'm gonna say amen, Reverend Burgess. I'm gonna say amen.
Thank you. Let the church say amen. Be blessed today, everybody.
Absolutely. Bye, everyone.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you. We are adjourned.